Good evening. It is Monday, July 22, 2024, the regular meeting of the Planning Board. We will start the meeting at exactly 6:02. Before we begin our meeting, there will be one general period of public comment tonight during oral communications. Persons speaking during general public comment period may provide the Planning Board oral communication or on any matter concerning city business. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment period. If you would like to participate in the public comment period by making an in-person comment, please present a completed speaker card to the planning staff. If you would like to participate in the public comment period by telephone, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open. I will give the invocation and the flag salute tonight. If everyone will please rise for the invocation. Mine's going to be a quote from Charlie Chaplin, who lived eighty-eight years and left four important messages during his life. Number one, nothing is internal in this world, not even our problems. Number two, I like to walk in the rain so that no one can see my tears. Number three, a wasted day in life is when you don't laugh. Number four, the six best doctors in the world are sun, rest, exercise, diet, self-esteem, and friends. Stick to them every day of your life and enjoy a healthy life. Life is a journey, so live for today because tomorrow may not be. Please join me in saluting our flag. Madam Clerk, can we get the roll call?
Chair Rosati.
I am here.
Vice Chair Wick.
Present.
Commissioner Makutumian.
Present.
And Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Do we have any announcements from staff?
No announcements.
There is one public hearing on tonight's agenda. In consulting with the city attorney, I do have a conflict in this matter, and I'm going to be stepping out of this portion of the meeting and turning the meeting over to Vice Chair Wick, and I will step back into the meeting to close it.
All right. Thank you, Chair Rosati. Before we begin, do any other Planning Commission members have any legal, financial, or other conflict of interest relating to the hearing?
No.
No.
No. Have any Planning Commission members had any communications, including written or oral, with any person about this project?
No.
No.
I'd like to say that I did receive a call about it. I did not discuss the project, and I urged them to call into the meeting. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
We have received written communications, and they've been presented to the commission.
Thank you. Did we get a packet with written? Oh, are you talking about in the Agenda packet?
Yeah.
We didn't receive any emails, right? Got it. Sorry about that.
The color flags in the Agenda packet.
Thank you. Will the representative from the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter before us?
May I have the presentation, please? Good evening, Vice Chair Wick and members of the commission. My name is Fatima Benitez, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department's Planning Division. For your consideration, tonight is project number 240003035, an appeal of project number 230005025, an administrative use permit to allow the installation of a new roof-mounted wireless telecommunication facility on an existing commercial building located at 800 South Main Street. The project representative is Rob Searcy on behalf of Dish Wireless. The requested appeal project number 240003035 is to deny the Community Development's Director's decision to conditionally approve project number 230005025, an AUP for a new roof-mounted wireless telecommunication facility on an existing commercial office building located at 800 South Main Street. The project site is located at 800 South Main Street between West Elmwood Avenue and West Valencia Avenue, as highlighted in yellow on the aerial photograph. The project is split zoned with most of the project including the portion on which the project is situated, located within the neighborhood business zone and a rear surface parking area zoned as R1, single-family residential. The property has a general plan land use designation of Rancho Commercial. The site is surrounded by a mix of residential, commercial, and educational uses to the north, residential uses to the east, and commercial and professional uses to the west, and residential uses and a gas station to the south. Shown here is the proposed site plan. The proposed project is to install a roof-mounted wireless telecommunication facility on an existing commercial building located at 800 South Main Street. The enlarged site plan on the slide shows how the proposed wireless telecommunication facility will be comprised of three sectors with two antenna mounts on each sector for a total of six antenna mounts. Each sector will have one antenna for a total of three antenna combined. Consistent with all other wireless telecommunication facilities, these separate but connected components comprise one singular wireless telecommunication facility. The facility will also include accessory equipment, including but not limited to remote radio units, cable trays, and miscellaneous rooftop equipment. The wireless telecommunication facility will occupy a total area of 365.88 square feet and include a ten-foot-high visual screen and will have a setback from the edge of the roof ranging between ten feet and forty-four feet with two inches. One of the two wireless telecommunication facility antenna sectors of the facility is proposed to be located on the north corner of the building facing the existing parking lot fronting South Main Street. The second antenna sector is located towards the southeast corner of the building facing West Valencia Avenue. The accessory equipment will be centrally located on the roof behind an existing mechanical screen that will be increased in height to fully screen the equipment. Pursuant to Table 10-1-1118, subsection C, the project site is within the neighborhood zone and is residentially adjacent, which requires an AUP. Per Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-1959, subsection B, the review authority for an AUP is a director or Planning Commission if appealed. The BMC does not require a public hearing to be held prior to the issuance of an AUP decision, although public notification is required for all AUPs. The public notification requirements for all AUPs is: Number one, mailed public notices for all property owners and occupants within the 1,000-foot radius from the project site. And two, an onsite posted sign. Public notification for the project was completed as required by the Burbank Municipal Code. Please note that this project does not trigger the requirements for development review and therefore does not need to be considered by the Rancho Review Board. The director or his or her designee or the Planning Commission, if appealed, must affirmatively make the required findings to approve or conditionally approve an administrative use permit. Findings one through three are listed on this slide. Findings four through six are shown on this slide. All required findings are listed in the Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-1956. Additionally, the appropriate environmental analysis must be completed to determine if the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act or if further environmental analysis is warranted. Further, for the approval of the project, the decision-maker must find the project is consistent with the Burbank 2035 general plan. If an appeal of a director's decision is filed, the Planning Commission must hold a de novo hearing to consider and act on the project application and appeal pursuant to the procedures established for each application type. This means the prior decision is set aside in its entirety, and the Planning Commission makes a new decision. Further, the Planning Commission must affirmatively make the required findings and a sequent determination. In addition, federal law specifies that any decision to deny a wireless telecommunication facility application must be supported by substantial evidence contained in a written record. The evidence must show that the specific zoning decision at issue was supported by substantial evidence in the context of applicable local regulations. Before you is the project timeline. On October 20, 2023, Rob Searcy on behalf of Dish Wireless submitted an AUP application for a proposed wireless telecommunication facility on an existing commercial office building. The applicant provided supplemental information and clarifications between January through May 2024. The project was deemed to complete on January 18, 2024. Prior to the issuance of the determination letter, public notices were sent out to all properties within the 1,000-foot radius from the project site. The first public notices were sent out on April 8, 2024. To ensure all properties received information about the proposed project, staff sent out a second public notice on May 17, 2024. On June 5, 2024, the conditionally approved AUP decision letter was issued to the applicant and was published on the city website. On June 18, 2024, Nicolette Lefebre, on behalf of the appellant group of thirty-one individuals, submitted an appeal of the director's decision. The submitted appeal included a description of the appellant's contentions or basis for the appeal. Based on staff's understanding of submitted materials, the appeal makes seven distinct contentions. Those contentions will be described point by point on this and the following slides, with each contention followed by the city's response. For contention number one, the appellant contends that the project failed to follow proper noticing procedure. The first public notice was not transparent as that the description of the project was insincere, and the city spoliated evidence from the community. The city did not notify everyone within the 1,000-foot radius from the project site. Finally, allowing the applicant to send out the notices is a conflict of interest. The city's response is, "The project was reviewed and noted in accordance with all applicable city regulation noted in BMC Title X zoning regulation." Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-1959, subsection B, outlines the following notice requirements for an AUP. Number one, one four-foot-by-eight-foot sign must be posted on the project site no less than ten business days before the director's scheduled decision date. And number two, notice of the director's proposed decision to approve the application with or without conditions must be mailed to the applicant and to all property owners and occupants within 1,000 feet of the project site for which the administrative use permit is being sought. For this project, a sign was posted on the project site on April 10, 2024, and the initial project notice was sent to property owners and occupants within 1,000 feet of the project site on April 8, 2024. Staff was subsequently informed that one business located at 720 South Main Street was not provided with mailed notice. Staff confirmed that the mailing labels omitted this address and require the applicant to provide new mailing labels with a required signed affidavit acknowledging the mapmaker provided the mailing labels for the properties that are within the 1,000-foot radius of the project site. The applicant was not the party to prepare or send out the notices. The notices were prepared and sent out by the city. The second public notice was issued on May 17, 2024 to all property owners and occupants within 1,000 feet of the project site. As explained, the initial omission of the business located at 720 South Main Street was corrected by sending a new initial notice to that property and including that property in the second public notice. The notices that were provided in advance of the decision for the project included accurate project descriptions that provided the public with advance notice of the proposed project features beyond the noticing requirements of the Burbank Municipal Code. The city did not spoliate evidence from the community during the issuance of these notices. Both notices describe the project as a request to install a roof-mounted wireless telecommunication facility on an existing commercial office building, and the second notice clarified additional project features in response to some confusion staff received from the public following the first public notice about the project. Specifically, the second public notice clarified that although the project consists of different components, including three sectors and a centrally-located accessory equipment area, they are considered one wireless telecommunication facility as defined in the Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-203. Finally, the appellant is incorrect in stating that the applicant sent the public notices. Staff prepared the public notices and mailed them out using the mailing labels provided by the applicant. As with all projects requiring mailed notice, the applicant is required to furnish the city with a list of address labels for all properties that are entitled to receive notice under the Burbank Municipal Code, which assists with cost and resource recovery in processing such projects. While one address was omitted from the initial address labels, the applicant promptly corrected this omission. For contention number two, the appellant contends the project does not comply with the National Environmental Policy Act, NIPA, regulations. The city response is, "NIPA requires federal agencies to assess the potential environmental impacts of federal agency actions prior to making decisions. In some cases, local agency actions made by cities, counties, or states can be required to undergo NIPA review if federal funds are used to finance the underlying local project." Here, the project is proposed by a private party, Dish Wireless, and seeks a city-issue permit, the AUP, pursuant to the City of Burbank's BMC Title X zoning regulation, which requires no action by federal agencies. Furthermore, the project is not federally funded. Therefore, NIPA does not apply to the project. For contention number three, the appellant contends the city failed to show how the project complies with the Children's Protection Act. The city response is, "The project complies with all applicable local, state, and federal permitting regulations for a wireless telecommunication facility. Staff was unable to identify the Children's Protection Act specifically referenced by the appellant. Staff reached out to the appellant requesting information about the Children's Protection Act, but the appellant did not provide staff with the additional information to confirm the validity of the reference act and any compliance issues." Therefore, staff was unable to determine what legislation the appellant is referring to and whether such legislation regulates the installation of wireless facilities with respect to children's safety. Nevertheless, staff located a 2021 federal bill that was introduced in the House of Representatives as the Children's Protection Act of 2021, which would have required federal agencies to analyze the impacts of federal rules that may negatively affect the health outcomes of a substantial number of children. This bill has not been adopted as a federal law and is not applicable to this project. For contention number four, the appellant contends the project violated Federal Communication Commission, FCC, 14-3, 5.050, requiring a separation of 1,000 feet from any other telecommunications site. The city response is, "The project complies with all applicable local, state, and federal permitting regulations for a wireless telecommunication facility. Staff researched the appellant's contention and could not find FCC 14-3, 5.050," referenced by the appellant. Further, staff requested from the appellant to provide the specific federal regulation that requires wireless telecommunication facilities to be 1,000 feet away from any other telecommunications site. However, the appellant did not provide the requested information. Therefore, it is unclear what FCC 14-3, 5.050 is or whether it applies to the project. In general, cities retain local authority over individual zoning decisions regarding the placement, construction, and modification of wireless telecommunication facilities subject to the limitations listed in the Federal Telecommunication Act of 1996. Here, local regulations applicable to the project are set forth in the Burbank Municipal Code. The Burbank Municipal Code includes no separation requirements between wireless telecommunication facilities. Therefore, the project is not required to maintain a 1,000-foot separation from other telecommunications sites. For contention number five, the appellant contends the project does not comply with height requirements for structures in a single-family residential neighborhood. The city's response is, "Although the project is split zoned, the project itself is entirely within the neighborhood business zone and is not subject to the single-family residential development standards." Pursuant to the wireless telecommunication facility development standards found in Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-1118, subsection D, 4A, new building-mounted wireless telecommunication facilities, including any screening devices, shall not exceed a height of fifteen feet above the roof or parapet, whichever is higher of the building on which it is being mounted. The project facility and visual screens will not exceed a height of ten feet. Therefore, the project complies with the Burbank Municipal Height Regulations for wireless telecommunication facilities that are applicable to structures on buildings located in the underlying neighborhood business zone. For contention number six, the appellant contends exposure to radio frequency electromagnetic energy, RFEM, is dangerous, and the FCC does not provide information on the health and safety of RF radiation. Health concerns related to the RFEM are evidenced by an independent scientific study ruling that the cause and health-related issues in firefighters was caused by RFEM from wireless facilities on or in close proximity to fire stations. This concern was recognized by the exemption for fire stations in AB 57. The city's response is, "Federal law precludes a city from regulating or denying a wireless telecommunication facility, project on the basis of environmental effects from RF emissions, including health impacts, unless it is demonstrated that the project would not meet the FCC's RF emission regulations. As a result, to the fullest extent allowed by federal law, the Burbank Municipal Code does the following. It requires applicants for a wireless telecommunication facility to provide documentation of compliance with FCC regulations pertaining to RF emissions upon submittal of a wireless telecommunication facility application. Two, the Burbank Municipal Code prohibits a wireless telecommunication facility from generating RF emissions in excess of the FCC standards or other applicable regulations. And three, once a wireless telecommunication facility is installed, the Burbank Municipal Code requires ongoing inspection, testing, and reporting of continued compliance with the FCC standards to the city. The applicant has provided an RFEM site compliance report to provide verification of compliance with the federal regulations on RF emissions as part of the application's submittal requirements. Further, as a condition of approval, the wireless telecommunication facility owner or operator will be required to provide periodic reporting demonstrating ongoing compliance with federal regulations." The appellant did not furnish staff with the independent scientific study relating to health issues and firefighters caused by RFEM. Appellants referred to AB 57 as an acknowledgement of the health concerns related to RF. Although appellants did not furnish a copy of AB 57 to staff, staff believes appellants are referred to Assembly Bill 57, which was adopted by the state in 2015. AB 57 added Section 65964.1 to the California Government Code, which provides that a co-location or siting application of a wireless telecommunication facility is deemed approved if it satisfies certain criteria and a city or county fails to approve or disapprove the application within specified time periods. AB 57 included an exemption from the deemed-approved process for wireless telecommunication facilities that are placed on fire department facilities. This exemption does not prevent a wireless telecommunication facility application involving such facilities from being automatically deemed approved if a local government fails to adhere to the applicable shot clock periods when processing these applications. Section 65964.1 provides that the fire department exemption is due to the unique duties and infrastructure requirements for the swift and effective deployment of firefighters and does not refer to concerns relating to RF emissions. However, as explained, even if independent studies observe health-related issues from RF emissions, the city can only regulate a wireless telecommunication facility based on RFEM to the extent a facility fails to comply with the FCC's applicable RF standards. Here, because the project complies with the FCC RF standards, health effects from related RF emissions from the wireless telecommunication facility may not be considered and cannot be the basis for regulation or denial of the project. For contention number seven, the appellant contends the project is a fire hazard due to electrical-mechanical failure that can occur. The city's response is, "The project was routed to the city's fire department and Building and Safety Division of the Community Development Department for review, and no safety concerns were identified. Therefore, the contention is speculative, and no evidence exists to demonstrate that the design, location, or operation of the proposed wireless telecommunication facility poses any unusual fire safety hazards." Pursuant to Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-1959, Pursuant to Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-1907.2, the Planning Commission is the review authority of appeals of decisions on any procedural errors or decisions that would necessitate the reversal of the director's decision or serve as cause for the director's decision to be remanded for reconsideration. If an appeal of a director's decision is filed, the Planning Commission must hold a de novo hearing to consider and act on the project application and appeal pursuant to the procedures established for each application type. This means the prior decision is set aside in its entirety, and the Planning Commission makes a new decision. The appellant's contentions did not provide additional evidence that would alter the analysis and support of the required findings in the original appeal. Staff reviewed the project to ensure it complies with all local and federal regulations. The administrative use permit findings from Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-1956 to conditionally approve the AUP can be recommended by the analysis in the staff report. The project complies with all applicable zoning regulation from the Burbank Municipal Code, and staff recommends the commission find the project is consistent with the Burbank 2035 general plan. Staff recommends that the commission find the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, pursuant to CEQA Guideline Section 15303 pertaining to new construction of a limited number of small facilities or structures or conversion of small structures from one use to another where only minor exterior modifications are made. Based on the analysis of the project's scope and applicable regulations, the project is exempt from CEQA, is consistent with the Burbank Municipal Code and Burbank 2035 general plan, and satisfies the required findings for an AUP. Therefore, staff is recommending that the commission adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Burbank denying the appeal of the Community Development Director's approval of Project Number 230005025 and approving an administrative use permit to allow a new unmained roof-mounted wireless telecommunications facility on an existing commercial office building located at 800 South Main Street, based on the findings of fact and subject to the attached conditions of approval. Just a note to the commission. Condition number one of the attached resolution has a small typographical error. The condition should read, "Project Number 230005025 Administrative Use Permit approves installation of a new unmained roof-mounted wireless telecommunications facility with three panel antennas with accessory equipment located on the roof of the existing commercial office building located at 800 South Main Street." This concludes my presentation, and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will now invite the applicant or their representative to address the Planning Commission. You will have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. My name is Rob Searcy, and I'm here tonight representing Dish Wireless. Dish Wireless is a new entrant into the national mobile services competition and will be a direct competitor with AT&amp;T, Verizon, and T-Mobile. And this is the first carrier that's building a ground-up national system probably in the last 20 years. So they have a lot of work ahead of them, and this project is one of 12 sites that's being proposed within the City of Burbank that will tie into the backbone of their regional system. And at this time, that network has not been turned on, and I think their objective is to get their site and the network turned on sometime within 2025. So...
Please load the presentation.
There we go. The slide before you shows basically where the site's located, and it replicates what staff had presented. In addition to calling out that really you have about a 500-foot radius that's shown here by the red circle. Within that 500-foot radius, the land uses include both single-family residential, multifamily residential, and commercial. Challenge here, too, is that you also have areas outside that 500-foot radius within the 1,000-foot notification radius that also include an elementary school and some daycare facilities as well. Consistent with the Burbank Municipal Code, this project is one that complies with the AUP conditions for locating a wireless facility in a commercial zone on top of a roof. This is probably the least intrusive type of project that wireless facilities really propose. It doesn't include a monopole, and it is all self-contained on the rooftop of this 35-foot commercial building. What you have here is basically an example of where those three sectors are located on the rooftop. We have two sectors that are combined, located in the norally portion of the roof, and we have one sector that's located in the southerly part of the roof. Typically, wireless telecommunications facilities are designed to basically cover about a 360-foot radius. We found about 25 years ago that instead of using just one antenna, it became much more effective from an engineering standpoint and from a control standpoint to break that 360-degree radius into three different sectors. Each sector traditionally covers about 120-foot section of that pie. Our facility is a little different than what you'll see with some of the other carriers. Most carriers have three sectors or four antennas per sector when we're talking about a macro site. This is a macro site. The difference that we have with Dish Wireless is that typically they roll out two antennas with two radios per antenna for every sector. And on this facility, it's actually only rolling out one antenna with two radios per sector. So it's quite a bit more diminutive than what you'll typically see with some of the other carriers. And so that also impacts the coverage footprint, the EMF that's generated, and things like that. So again, this is a 35-foot building. We're proposing three sectors with one antenna per sector. Each sector provides two radios, so a total of six. Each sector has been designed to be 10 feet off the closest portion of the edge of the building. We did that because although the code allows us to go 15 feet above the roof deck, at that point, we really are trying to achieve a one-to-one distance between the edge of the roof and the height of the antenna. You don't get a lot more by going higher and further back. So 10 feet seemed to be a sweet spot that was less than the maximum allowed by code, so that's how the design came about. The equipment compound is centrally located within an existing equipment enclosure that encloses other mechanical equipment on the rooftop. And in fact, staff worked with us to actually confirm that that site completely or that portion of the site's completely enclosed. So we'll be raising the existing screen enclosure about two and a half feet to make sure that we've captured the ability to obfuscate any visual access to that equipment. The access to this facility is actually going to be taken from the southeastern corner of the building. We'll be installing a new secured ladder with a lock on it, so only secured, authorized individuals will have access to that area. As it relates to what we'll be looking at from an aesthetic standpoint, the code also requires that we obfuscate every portion of this project from visual access from any resident. What we proposed here, this is the actual sector on the north side, where we have two sectors that are being combined into one enclosure. That's a 16-by-9 enclosure, 10 feet tall. And as you can see, the FRP, which is a material that allows the propagation of the signal without blocking it, that can be colored and textured so that it matches the exterior of the building. So as you can see, we've matched the exterior color of the building and actually added trim to the very top of that screen wall so that it integrates pretty seamlessly and becomes very compatible with the aesthetics of the building. Next, I'd like to show, as I have stated, that the Dish rollout for equipment in Southern California is pretty robust. We have a lot ahead of us here, and the sites that you see here are all the proposed sites within the region, not only in Burbank, but within adjacent cities such as Glendale, City of LA. This Rorschach-looking kind of display is actually a propagation map. What this shows is that the sites that are adjacent and are budding the site in the future will have a performance footprint that's shown here. The dark green is the most robust and effective signal. It provides in-building coverage. The lighter green will provide a modicum of in-building, but definitely outside coverage. And the area in orange will be where you'll basically have connection for your handheld device outside a building. The white areas are areas where we don't project to have any coverage or there will be an unsatisfactory level of service there. This particular facility, at 35 feet above grade and plus 10 feet for the apex of the antenna, will perform in this manner. One of the things that I'd like to maybe just very quickly go over is how wireless facilities operate. When a wireless facility is turned on, that antenna has a propagation that really projects out in a conical level out to the horizon. So what you'll see is you don't have very much power or signal going directly down. It's very similar to the plume on an irrigation head. That plume goes out, and if you stood right under that, you're not going to have very much of a moisture hitting you. It really projects out from that. This is the same thing that we see here. And the reason I bring that up is it directly ties into the EME study that was provided to the city and has been reviewed. The FCC establishes standards for performance and for electromagnetic exposure, both for occupational people who are onsite or adjacent to a site and for the general public. I think the most salient part of this is the conclusion raised in the EME study. And that conclusion states that the proposed facility will operate at less than 1% of the maximum permissible exposure at ground. So if you're walking through the parking lot, you're on the sidewalk, or you're anyplace around the footprint of that building, you will be exposed to less than one-half of 1% of the maximum permissible exposure. So in other words, this site will operate at ground as measured 99.5% below the maximum permissible exposure. And what we did is have the EME report prepared to show the maximum build-out the site could ever entertain in the future. So it actually looked at three antennas per sector for a total of nine antennas and 18 radios. And again, only proposing one antenna per sector and two radios. So even at one-half of 1%, you can diminish that by a ratio equivalent to whether or not we would ever build this out to its fullest extent. I will say this for the record, that what we did is design the site to add one future antenna and two future radios, but they would have to come back to planning for approval and amend this AUP if it is approved to reflect that change in performance. But the EME report looks at the worst-case scenario and any evitability. Next slide is actually a little confusing from the EME report. What this shows is that this is the exposure level at ground. As you'll see, there's no green, there's no red, there's no yellow because it operates at such a low degree that, as shown here, there will be no exposure to the public from this rooftop facility. The next one is, again, a little bit confusing, but there's a reason for it. This shows what the exposure limit would be at 34 feet above ground level. Again, I told you, this building is 35 feet. At 34 feet, which is one foot below the apex of the building, as you can see here, it's green, which means you're less than or someplace between 5 and 100%. And actually, at this location, you'd be less than 5% of the permissible exposure level. If I go to the next slide, I see the worst-case scenario, which looks at the performance and exposure that's generated by these antennas if I'm looking at the antennas 10 feet above the deck of the roof. So the reason this is important is, again, I told you, these are six-foot antennas on a four-foot mount. So at 10 feet, you're looking at the very top of the antenna. That is the maximum area where exposure is generated by these antennas. The worst-case scenario here shows the red area, which means that you're operating in an area of concern. You need to be very careful about that. The yellow area shows an area where you still need to be concerned about your exposure and standing in front of those antennas. The green area shows, again, where that power diminishes to an acceptable level of exposure. The reason I bring this up is the fact that at 10 feet above the roof deck, there is no public access. There is no one from the public that would be within 15 feet or even eight feet of that antenna. Now, occupants or occupational workers may be on that roof who are doing maintenance activities and things like that. And so what the report requires is that we put a notification and warning signs in the area so that those employees or those workers who are on that rooftop understand that they're in an area of concern and that they need to be very careful. And typically, what we have is for workers who are accessing that rooftop, there's a contact number at the bottom where they can call the carrier and have them shut that site down so that there's no EME being emitted from the site. With the time I have left, very quickly, I'll just say that this project has been long. It's been arduous. We've been working with staff for about nine or 10 months now. I had an opportunity to talk to some people from the public prior to the determination letter being disseminated. We were able to discuss their concerns, and I provided some additional information to them, especially as it related to their idea that there was some preclusion from us being within 1,000 feet of a school district. And to my knowledge, there is only one school district that I'm aware of, LA Unified District, which has a policy that states, not that they will not allow it or it cannot happen, it's simply that for projects within 500 feet of a school district, they want the city to identify and notify them that the project is in flight, and it gives them an opportunity to give their opinion as to whether or not they're in favor or against it. But again, I know that we built sites, well, not this carrier, but other carriers that built sites actually on the campus of schools, and that we have projects that operate right in front of schools. And understanding that there's an importance during times of catastrophic events that you want to have some emergency service access to your cell phone. Anyway, with that, I'll conclude my presentation. I would ask that I have ability to come up and discuss any comments that may arise from other public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now invite the appellant or their representative to address the Planning Commission. You will have a maximum time of 15 minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. As discussed with Fatima, I'm kindly asking to extend our hearing for a later date as our attorney was not available this evening to represent us.
I'm sorry, could you identify yourself? I didn't catch your name.
I'm Nicolette LaFevre.
Okay, you're...
Yes.
City staff, so the appellant wants to extend. Mr. City Attorney, I'm not advisor.
Yeah, my input on this would be, there's no requirement to continue it. Most times when we schedule an appeal hearing, we actually, you know, quite the opposite. We actually want that hearing to occur because otherwise it would set a precedent to continue and continue. My issue here would be there are some instances that I could imagine unforeseen circumstances truly. But here, to my knowledge, all parties were notified of this very early on, and there were no objections to it except for maybe in the last couple of days, maybe late last week. So legally speaking, there's no requirement to continue it. And I think there's definitely several reasons to ensure... And I think there's definitely several reasons to ensure that this hearing goes tonight. I will throw out there, just, I want to open up everything so everyone understands. The Burbank Municipal Code allows for an appeal of this decision. So I always let Planning Commission keep that in mind for any item.
Thank you very much. Does staff have any comments on that or anything?
No, I would just say that, not sure how she wants to use her time, the appellant, but she has 15 minutes. If that's the only comment that's being made, then we can continue with the meeting. You know, you're still contemplating whatever comment she's made, but I'm not sure if you want to state anything else during your 15 minutes.
I do have a speech prepared. I was just requesting additional time, so our attorney could be present.
Okay.
You can use the time to write, read the prepared speech.
I would say, if I can, let's have her, and Mr. City Attorney, if I'm acting out a turn, please flag me down. I would say, let's let the appellant give her speech, and then we can... Because also, too, I don't want to rob the members of the public who have made their time to be here tonight to speak, but we could continue it in deliberations. Is that an option on the table for us, or...
So, I mean, as I'm thinking here, the other thing to keep in mind, too, is the applicant applied for an entitlement. This is a de novo hearing, so you're really hearing it from the beginning. I haven't heard a particular reason other than the attorney wasn't able to make it here. So, you know, I think, hearing what the appellant has to say during this 15-minute period and then continuing it afterward, you know, there's no difference. And I don't know why the commission would want to hear it and then decide to continue it. At this point, you know, we're already in advance of the actual proceeding, and you're hearing the merits, so, you know, it wouldn't make sense, I think, to continue, to hear more about it, and then make a decision later to continue the hearing.
Okay. All right. Let's continue the hearing. Let's continue.
Madam Chair.
I mean, I'm sorry. Let me, that didn't, that didn't come out correctly. Let's proceed with the appellant's presentation.
And if we can, just, Madam Chair, if we can just allot her the time...
Oh, absolutely.
That was...
Taken away by...
Taken away through the discussion.
Yes, absolutely.
So if you can, Madam Clerk, if we can correct that, that'd be great. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you.
Proceed.
Hi, my name is Nicolette. I'm a local mom and homeowner residing doors down from the proposed project at 800 South Main Street. I'm here tonight presenting our... representing our community in the appeal against installation of wireless telecommunications facilities atop of a neighborhood business building attached to an R1 residential block. This location is not only attached to residential streets, but steps away from two preschools and McKinley Elementary School. This has created immense amount of controversy, as it's raised concerns threatening local businesses, property devalue, degrading our neighborhood's aesthetics, imposing fear in families over health concerns given such close proximity. All these factors impact our community's well-being and quality of life. Please take into consideration the following. Under Burbank zoning and municipal codes, any ground or building mounted antenna that receives radio or television signals for use only by owners or occupants of the property or development on which the antenna is located does not exceed a height of 15 feet above the maximum allowable building height for the zone in which the antenna is located. Section B, Burbank zoning, also states, freestanding WTFs, including any camouflage or screening devices, may not exceed a height of 35 feet above the ground surface unless approved by a CUP. Burbank's maximum height for freestanding structures is 30 feet total. In addition, Burbank declined permitting 5G antennas on the Little White Chapel on height restrictions alone, as the steeple is 39 feet tall. Installation of antennas on 800 South Main Street would bring the height to a total of 45 and a half feet, over 15 feet past the maximum permissible site. Under requirements for WTFs in the single-family residential zones, the Council Planning Commission Director, upon approving a conditional use permit or an administrative use permit, must find, A, the WTF is necessary to address a significant gap in coverage, and B, there are no feasible alternative locations or design configurations that would be less intrusive. Upon reading all the application forms, there is no documentation applied proving such. Not only is this information required for Burbank's own municipal code and zoning, but it is also a requirement for the FCC Communications Act of 1996. Section 332(c)(7a), General Authority for Smart Planning Division, Section 3. Avoid the greatest extent possible, only unnecessary adverse impacts on the residential districts and residential properties. Thus requiring the applicant to provide proof that there is no possible alternative location, and they have exhausted a thorough analysis of every possible alternative location. There was also no proof provided that DISH Network has specific gaps in coverage located at 800 South Main Street. That would require providing drive test data, also known as hard data, proving drops in coverage. As acknowledged by federal court, a gap in coverage in 5G service does not prove a significant gap in coverage, and denial of this application does not constitute an effective prohibition. As a rule, if a customer can connect to 5G, 4G, landline, and others, you have coverage. Again, none of this information was provided by Burbank or the applicant. There is also no evidence provided proving that 800 South Main Street does not already serve with radio frequency coverage. Upon reviewing the application under required conditional use permit findings, it asked the applicant, is the proposed use authorized through a conditional use permit by Title 10 of the municipal code? His answer, yes. The city's municipal code lists WTF as conditionally allowed land use within commercial zones. The 800 South Main Street building is not located in a commercial zone. It is clearly located and documented as being located in a neighborhood business zone attached to an R1 residential zone. According to FCC regulations, the Planning Division may deny without prejudice wireless communication facilities, Section 6409(a) zoning clearance application when B. The proposed change would violate an objective generally applicable law related to health and safety. Whereas the city claims it has no pull in regards to health and safety, there is written language that suggests otherwise. There's also several mentions in Burbank Municipal Code, Burbank zoning, FCC regulations, and Telecommunications Act of 1996 in the placement in regards to adverse effects on the neighborhoods. Under the Telecommunications Act, A, provision, Congress to preserve local authority to control placement of WTFs. The city has the power to adopt any setback ordinance they choose. Many other cities across California have codified minimum distances from schools, daycares, and residential properties. This standard can be implemented without running afoul of the FCC rules and regulations. Burbank, please support the health and safety of our community. In addition, I have spoken with leading experts on this issue and request taking the time to hear a presentation from Dr. Kent Chandler before making a decision. Dr. Kent is a world-renowned expert from the New Hampshire Commission and is happy to speak with you or make a presentation to the City Council, Planning Commission, and all municipal skateboarders about the findings of the commission as it relates to cellular placements and the safest options possible. He is also a radio frequency radiation engineer and is willing to speak to you at no charge before making a binding and impacting decision on the community. Thank you for your consideration.
We will now open the meeting to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the Planning Commission for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to the Planning Division staff if you wish to speak. For members of the public that wish to comment by telephone, please call 818-238-3335 to address the Planning Commission. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us, as it may take a couple minutes for the first callers to get through the line. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers here tonight? All right, thank you. Our first speaker is Maria Koblat, sorry.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Marvilly Cornblatt. I live at 435 West Valencia. I'd like to start with the notices. Notice number one refers to a singular rooftop antenna and doesn't reflect an accurate footprint of the property. Notice number two now notes six antennas and continues to misrepresent the footprint of the property. Notice number three is back to a antenna and finally acknowledges the R1 portion of the property. A prominent arrow on the notices changes direction with each notice. Notice number three finally refers to the existing 35-foot-tall commercial office building, which already exceeds the 25-foot height standard for the neighborhood business zone. I don't know whether these discrepancies are just not staff's best work, or if they're deliberately misleading. Call me a cynic. On staff report page four, declares the project is exempt from development review and therefore not subject to review by the Rancho Review Board. I believe this to be the wrong conclusion. Staff's reference to Section 10-1-1914(4) does not support an AUP instead of a CUP. This is not an addition to an existing wireless transmission facility, nor are its structures detached. It's a new installation, and it's very much attached to the building as the site plan and application make clear. The DISH application also makes clear that it is a new roof-mounted installation. As a new development and a new installation, as well as its proximity to a single-family residential zone, the request should require a CUP rather than an AUP. If the project is not exempt from development review, Section 10-1-2453 calls for a Rancho Review Board to be formed to review all development projects within the Rancho master plan area and should absolutely apply. Staff report page four, I believe this purposely understates the character of the surrounding neighborhood. The east property line shares a minimum 165 feet of R1H property, and to the south, at least 135 feet of R1H property. For some reason, the gas station is mentioned, but not the two preschools or McKinley Elementary. Section 10-1-1901.1 calls for the Community Development Director to host a community meeting prior to making a decision regarding a development review application. This proposal has caused considerable concerns with the residents and businesses within close proximity to development, and many would have welcomed some information, perhaps that may have calmed those concerns. Exhibit L of the staff report shows maps that are most significant for what they don't show, the numbers of WTFs in the area which would better inform the commission about the supposed coverage gap in the area. I would ask the commission to support the appeal and deny the application, and then I would encourage seeking an interim development control ordinance to take a close look at the proliferation of wireless transmission facilities and their impact on Burbank neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sherri Tilly.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm just a concerned citizen, and I don't live in this neighborhood. I live on the other side of Burbank. I've lived here a long time. But this is extremely disturbing to me that we would even consider putting something like this near a preschool, two preschools. One of these preschools is only 200 feet away from the proposed 5G, the 65G towers. I can't see where anyone here would want that near your home. And if they're, you know, I hear all of these, you know, these laws saying that there's not a problem with this with regard to the children. This is ridiculous. This just breaks my heart, that, you know, if there's not a law in Burbank, then let's make a law. You know, this is just, it's just really, it's really upsetting to me. So from what I understand, one of the preschools is approximately 200 feet away from these proposed 65G communication antennas. And this is in a residential area. If any of you haven't driven by there, I would ask that you do so. The second one is 400, the second preschool is approximately 400 feet away. The elementary school is less than 1,000 feet away. Again, if we're not going to consider our children, then who are we going to consider? The other thing that really made me question this is the fact, when I had read about these firefighters who got this exemption, that they don't want these towers on their buildings either. And this is, you know, if they got the exemption, then I would, I would hope that Burbank would consider giving, giving an exemption. The other thing that I also wanted to bring up is the fact that, from what I understand, the law says that DISH Network and Burbank is supposed to exhaust all other options. Did, did we? Did we look anyplace else? Were there not other places close by that were not in residential areas? I don't know. I don't know if we did. And I'd like DISH Network to answer, answer that. And I'd like the City of Burbank to answer that. You know, if we by law are supposed to exhaust all other options, then I want to know if we've done that or not.
That's your time.
Okay. Anyway, thank you for hearing me tonight.
Thank you. And there will be an opportunity for city staff to respond at the end, so. Our next speaker is Sarah.
My name is Sarah. I have two small children. I've lived in Burbank for nearly 20 years, so this is incredibly important to me. One of my children attends the preschool that is less than 200 feet or 300 feet from the proposed site. My children will be attending the middle school that's about 1,000 feet from this proposed site, so I'd like to speak to those issues. I don't believe, based on what I've seen, that staff has complied with the laws and ordinances and regulations that oversee these types of installations. Specifically, the FCC telecommunications act of 1996, in the very first paragraph and the first section titled "General Authority," Congress specifically preserved the authority of local governments to control the placement of wireless facilities within their jurisdiction. Smart planning provisions are necessary to regulate 5G towers and similar devices. If Palo Alto School District, if Ripon, California, can ensure that there is a 1,000-foot setback and a 1,500-foot setback from their schools, why can't we? It is absolutely absurd to me that we can hide behind the guise of, we don't have, we can't go against these FCC regulations. I don't think our staff fully understand the FCC regulations. I think if you listened to what the experts have to say, and if our attorney had been able to be present, you would hear fully that we do have the authority to make restrictions on where we can put these towers. I don't think we need one right on top of three schools and very close to another middle school. I think that's utterly ridiculous. Further, the inconsistencies that have come from staff in terms of those notices, you said that... said that the applicant didn't prepare the notices, but they provided labels, so they were directly involved in the process of sending out these notifications. If it hadn't been for the concerned neighbor, our school never would have been notified. You guys would have proceeded through. We wouldn't have heard about this until the construction had already begun. That's a problem for me as a parent, as a concerned citizen of Burbank, as a taxpayer in this city. I want to be informed. I actually called every single school within 1,000-foot radius of this proposed site and all of them, including McKinley Elementary and Huerta Middle School. I walked into their offices. They confirmed that they did not receive the notifications. That's a problem. That means somebody has dropped the ball. So even if you're getting the labels from the applicant, who inside the department is doing the research to make sure that everybody is included appropriately? It doesn't seem like that homework was done. The due diligence wasn't there. My expectation is that we have a phenomenal city and everybody here will do their job. I'm asking that you...
I get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Krista Heskey.
Hello, my name is Krista Heskey. I'm one of the owners and directors of Our Village Preschool. I'm here tonight with my business partners to express our many concerns regarding the approval of the AUP for the proposed installation of a 5G cellphone tower at 800 South Main. The potential health and environmental risk associated with this project warrant careful consideration and further investigation. A few years ago, an elementary school in Ripon, California had a cellphone tower on their campus, and subsequently, four students and two teachers were diagnosed with cancer. After pushback from the community, the cellphone tower owner shut their tower down. This anomaly of cancer diagnosis was not repeated after the tower was shut down. The Palo Alto Unified School District has a 1,500-foot setback requirement from schools. Walnut City, California also requires 1,500 feet from schools, parks, and residential zones. And Shelburne, Massachusetts requires cellphone towers a setback 3,000 feet from schools and 1,500 feet from homes. We don't want our school community or our three neighboring school communities to be the next Ripon. We need Burbank to be proactive, like Ripon, Palo Alto, and Shelburne. We need Burbank to do better. It is alarming to us as early childhood educators and business owners that the city of Burbank hasn't yet prioritized establishing these protections for our children and for those who spend their careers educating and caring for them. When even the EPA admits that FCC limits do not address possible risks from long-term exposures, why isn't the city being proactive in considering how this increasing radiation can impact future generations of our residents? In their annual SEC filings, the cellphone companies themselves are admitting to financial impact due to the risk of personal injury and wrongful death lawsuits as a result of human exposure to radiation. Yet DISH Wireless wants to come into Burbank and install more 5G towers, and you are joyfully allowing it. It is ironic that you keep saying local governments are precluded from considering the health effects of RF emissions from WTF pursuant to federal regulations, yet in the same breath you ascertain that the conditions imposed are necessary to protect the public health, convenience, safety, and welfare. Which is it? And why is it that you must notify businesses and residents within 1,000 feet if there are no health concerns? Knowing that communities in California and across the country are proactively addressing this risk, and the fact that the cellphone companies themselves are acknowledging the damage that 5G radiation can cause the human body, please help us understand while the city of Burbank is prepared to expose nearly 2,000 children and hundreds of adults who live and work in and around our schools to this radiation. Would you work at 800 South Main once these towers are installed? Would you want your family to attend school adjacent to this building? Consider how devastating it would be to find out that you or your beloved family member or friend has cancer, and then consider how decisions by city officials play a part in those situations due to radiation exposure. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nikki Combs.
Hi, my name is Nikki Combs. I am the other owner and director of Our Village Preschool at 720 South Main Street, which is less than 300 feet from the proposed site. My business partner Krista and I were public elementary school teachers for 16 years together, and we dedicated our entire lives to educating young children. Seven years ago, we left our teaching jobs to pursue our lifelong dream of opening our own preschool. We have literally poured everything that we have into Our Village Preschool, and it is our baby. The children who attend our school are our babies. While we were looking for a location for our school, we chose Burbank because of its reputation of having a small-town vibe and supposedly the support that the community shows to small business owners. Sadly, this is not what we are experiencing at all. At OVP, we take pride in the safe, loving, and supportive community that we have created for so many Burbank families. We're now here because we're greatly concerned about the radiation from the multiple 5G cellphone towers that are to be installed less than 300 feet from our school. It threatens the health and safety of our students, our teachers, and ultimately, the failure or success of our business, which means everything to us. The Burbank City Planning Commission has failed this community. We conveniently did not receive the first notice that was sent out in early April, as everyone knows. It was only because of Nicolette's due diligence that we even found out about this proposed 5G tower. The day that we found out, we stopped everything we were doing to address the issue. We reached out to McKinley Elementary, Dolores Huerta Middle School, and the other preschool adjacent to the site. Why were all four schools conveniently not notified? We took the time out of our busy day operating our business so that we could make sure we did everything to be, in our power, to keep the children in this community safe. Why aren't you doing the same? Over 2,000 children will be affected without notice. As we previously explained, many of the children who attend these schools for over seven hours each day do not live within the 1,000-foot notification area and therefore may be unaware of the health risks that their children are being exposed to each day at school. You should be required to notify every school in the area and then require all the schools to notify their families so that all stakeholders are given the opportunity to be heard. When we had the Zoom meeting with the Planning Commission, uniformed us the tower is to be placed on the roof and won't affect us. It is insulting that you keep trying to convince us this tower placement won't affect us simply 400 feet away, yet there are federal regulations that require you to notify residents within 1,000 feet. That requirement is obviously because anyone within 1,000 feet will be affected. We have made, been made aware that local governments are precluded from considering the health effects of RF emissions from WTF pursuant to federal regulations, but why? Why is the health of our community not to be considered? Why can't you take a moment, step back, and be human and make the right decision? Would you want your children to attend one of these schools with the chance they could develop cancer? An Egyptian study confirmed concerns that living nearby mobile, mobile phone-based stations increase the risk for developing headaches, memory problems, dizziness, depression, and sleep problems. If you don't have children and this doesn't terrify you, then how would you feel if this tower was placed on top of your office building? Would that make you lose sleep at night?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jessica Makinson.
My name is Jessica Makinson. I'm a parent of one of the adjacent preschools less than 300 feet away from the proposed site. Everyone keeps referencing a couple of things. The instance of the firefighters and how they had gotten the cell towers removed from that building wasn't because it was getting in the way of telecommunications. It was because those firefighters came down with cancer, multiple cases in the same location, so they had them removed. Because our firefighters don't deserve that, and our children certainly don't. Fatima, this is her first case, I understand, and some of her callousness could be chalked up to inexperience because, but I'm concerned that no one's bringing up the fact we're talking about children. We're talking about very small children, some of whom aren't even two years old. These FCC regulations and Communications Acts of 1996, 1996, we were talking about AOL dial-up. We were not talking about cell phones in our pockets, and the strength of this 5G has not been tested, it has not been tested on children. None of it has. Why would we do that to children? The strength of this technology is beyond our grasp, and there is no, there's, it was brought up, I don't know what it was, the EME report that the representative for the project brought up. What year was that from? Saying that it's okay to have 1% of, I don't know what year that's from, and I don't know what strength of technology that graph was from. And I don't know if I can bring my business to, and I say business, I bring my child, my three-year-old child, every day, five days a week, to a site that's less than 300 feet away on a technology that hasn't been tested on children's bodies who are, their bones are not developed, their organs are not developed in the same way adults are. And if the FCC regulations won't consider that in conjunction with whatever the Burbank regulations are, then, then I must, and that means I take my business out of Burbank. It's disturbing knowing there are other cities who will restrict cellphone towers and who will put people above profits, and then to be living in, in and around Burbank and knowing that there would be nothing we could do to protect children or residences. Burbank, you can do this. You can make a difference.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Serinia. I'm sorry, I can't quite read your writing.
I'm actually going to pass.
You're going to pass? Okay, no problem. Our next speaker is Emily Gableuddy. Former Mayor Emily Gableuddy.
Well, I was going to start with the reason findings one and three can't be made, but for the first time tonight, we all heard that, from DISH, that this is not the end of the proposal, this is the beginning of the proposal, and they're going from six antennas to nine. This piecemeals the project under CEQA, and so keep that in mind as I get to the end of my presentation. It's not in the staff report. It's nowhere to be found. The DISH is planning to go to nine maximum antennas. People have already talked about the inconsistent and confusing language that the staff wrote on the prior notices, so I gave you copies of those notices with the inconsistencies highlighted. I also provided an aerial photograph that identifies the preschool and the childcare facility and indicates that McKinley School abuts this property. It's more than just within 500-foot radius, so there's an aerial that's labeled, and you should use that for easy referral. The R1 zone on this property was omitted from the first two public notices. This procedural flaw alone is grounds to deny the project and grant the appeal. Second, this use permit runs with the land. It doesn't run with the building. This is all one property at 800 North Main Street. The R1 residential zone cannot and should not be buried as insignificant. It is a fact. It is on the property. One-third of the surface area of the lot of the built, of the property is R1 zone. The property is not just a neighborhood business zone. It is a split-zone, R1 and neighborhood business. There are other similar split zones in the city of Burbank. Approving this project would set a bad precedent. The wireless facility addressed in BMC Table C 1118 lists several categories. This facility does not qualify for one of those categories. There is a final category at the bottom that provides all other WTFs not listed above, and that is a conditional use permit. The property abuts R1 and R1H. It abuts McKinley Elementary School. It steps from small businesses, the childcare center to the north, and it is, and the preschool to the south. These are sensitive land uses. The project is not exempt from development review. Marv already covered that. It is neither an addition to something nor are the structures detached. That's Exhibit M in your packet. Under finding three, the staff wrote about closing a gap. The applicant states in Exhibit C, the site is not intended to close a gap. He said the site is not the one and only site that can meet DISH's requirements and indicated no effort to look for other locations. So this is not a finding that can be made. I made my comments earlier on CEQA, but I want to remind you that when the whole project is not disclosed, subsequent projects result in a piecemealing of the environmental clearance for this project. It should be denied.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right.
Excuse me, can I interrupt? Is he allowed to cede his time so she can finish? Since he passed on his time, is he allowed to do?
I have additional time as well.
She also has additional time.
No, 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 not, no. Do we have any further public comment cards? No. Do we have any callers on the line?
We do not have any callers.
Okay. Seeing that, seeing that we have no further callers, I declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
Yes, I wanted to respond to a few of the comments we just listened to. So regarding the height issue of the proposed wireless facility, pursuant to Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-1118 subsection D 4A, it states that wireless, wireless telecommunications facilities that are going to be roof-mounted are allowed to go up to 15 feet in height. With that said, this project does meet that requirement. In fact, the project is going to be 10 feet and below, is going to be completely screened with a visual screen that is 10 feet in height. Moving on, the project did comply with the required entitlement, which is an AUP, Administrative Use Permit, pursuant to Table 10-1-1118 subsection C. An AUP is required if it is residentially adjacent and is within a non-residential zone. As mentioned in my presentation, this property is zoned within the neighborhood of business zone, which is, which classifies the parcel as non-residential, which therefore only requires an AUP and not a conditional use permit, which is a CUP. Regarding the DR exemption, staff stole, is, the DR exemption from Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1-1914, for, number four, does apply, in fact, to the project as it reads additions to or, additions to or detach accessory structures to any existing non-residential structure which do not exceed 1,000 square feet in gross floor area. As mentioned in my presentation, I believe the total area that this project is going to occupy is roughly less than 400 square feet. Furthermore, the comment regarding, regarding the wireless telecommunications ordinance, we just want to point out that the Burbank Wireless Telecommunication Facility Ordinance was adopted by council on August 25, 2015, and it does not require wireless facilities to be set back a certain distance from educational uses or other wireless facilities. Another comment that I also wrote down was the applicant did provide mailing labels with the signed affidavit acknowledging the mapmaker provided all the mailing labels for, for properties that are within the 1,000-foot radius of the project site. Following up regarding that comment, to our, our understanding, the, there was only one property that reached out to us to let us know that they did not receive a public notice. Staff addresses issue by re-noticing the project, and we did not receive any other Lastly, regarding the proposal of future wireless facilities, staff only reviews what the original wireless application proposes. We're not responsible for any future wireless facilities that are not included in the original AUP application. facilities that are not included in the original AUP application. Thank you.
Just one more clarification, I think it's an important one, regarding the, I'm sorry, I shouldn't introduce myself, Greg Mirza-Vakian, Senior Planner. There was a, at least, there were at least two comments regarding the findings that are required for certain wireless projects. One of them is regarding the necessity of the project to address a significant gap in coverage, and the other one is regarding looking for feasible alternative locations for the project. These findings are required for wireless facilities in residential, in, in single-family residential zones only, and not for other wireless projects. This particular project site is in the neighborhood business zone, the R1 portion of the parcel is actually outside the boundaries of the project site.
All right, I'm gonna ask the members of the public to, staff was respectful when you were speaking, I'm gonna ask everybody to do the same, the public will have, the applicant, I'm sorry, the appellant will have a chance for rebuttal.
Thank you, just, just to summarize, that, that finding is, those two findings are not required for this project based on the, on the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any further comments from the Development Department?
Hi, good evening, Vice Chair, Members of the Commission, my name is Amanda Landry, Principal Planner in the Planning Division. And I just wanted to give the Commission a little bit of context about the city of Burbank's wireless regulations. The city embarked on about a five-year process, starting in 2011 through 2015 and again in 2017, to consider a series of zone text amendments that regulate wireless telecom issues, telecom facilities. Through that process, there was extensive public outreach, we engaged with many, many members of the community who were very concerned, shared many of the concerns that we heard here tonight, and we engaged with professionals in related to the wireless industry, including health professionals, legal experts, and then our own city attorney's office. And through that extensive multi-year effort, the city developed a strategy to incentivize the type of facilities that the city, through that process, deemed to be the least impactful, and those were those roof-mounted facilities. At the time, and currently today, we hear the most concern about the freestanding facilities, which most of you may know as like a monopole, those fake pine trees, things like that. So we did more, the city council did adopt a strategy to more heavily regulate those types of facilities. So I wanted to provide that context to the Commission, that the city did have a strong concern about this, and invested a significant amount of time and resources to look into this issue with the community, to develop the set of regulations that this facility was subject to, and that this facility, in staff's analysis, determined is consistent with the city's regulations. So if you have questions about that process, I'd be happy to provide additional clarification, but I did want to say that the city did invest quite a bit of time resulting in the regulations you see tonight.
Thank you. Any further comments from the Community Development Department?
Chair, if I may, Fred Ramirez, Assistant Director, I guess the other question, the other point that we want to make as well is, I think there were some questions regarding any potential changes to the scope of the project that could, that if someone were to come back, let's say the applicant were to come back at a later date to make modifications, those alterations, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, or the city attorney, but that would in essence require them to change the current approvals and go through the process once more for AUP to make any changes. So if, as noted in the Condition of Approval 1, the project as listed is pursuant to the scope of the work being listed there, if they were to make alterations in the future, then they would have to in essence come forth at that point and, and get approval of that project through that similar process. So what's in front of you is an application currently for wireless, and that's what was reviewed under the CEQA review that we undertook in its entirety, that scope. As I mentioned, if that, excuse me, if that were to change in the future, then we would have to reevaluate the CEQA process at that point in time.
Thank you. Any further comments from Community Development? All right. Seeing none, does the applicant or the representative wish to make any further comments? You will have a maximum time of 10 minutes.
Again, Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Rob Searcy, again representing DISH I think that the first thing I'd like to say is, I think some of my comments may have been mischaracterized. I have never said that there will be nine antennas at this site. I said that their review and preparation of the EME study showed nine antennas. That was an over-analysis, and I also said that the, or the applicant in DISH Wireless is very aware that if they come back at a later date for any modification to the site, they would be back in front of the director or the commission to have that project evaluated. Under CEQA, it's not a piecemeal, it's something that has to be looked at on a case-by-case basis. There is no anticipation that they will be back in a short time, a short term to ask for any expansion of the facility, site hasn't even gone on air. Once it's gone on air, there may be some anticipated changes to the site, but that's the same with every wireless facility that's been constructed by every carrier. As technology changes and evolves, as the character, or the character of the neighborhood or the area that's being served changes, there may be changes anticipated, and that wireless carrier may have to again come back at a later date, have the project reviewed and CEQA to be reconducted, to make sure that we're still within the acceptable parameters of any development. I know we've talked at length about health and safety. The carriers had nothing to do with the preparation of the Telecom Act of 1996 and any amendments to that, I think were in 2008. The federal government is the one that chose to remove consideration for health and safety from local jurisdictions, they felt it was a federal principle for them to review and establish those standards, and that the local jurisdictions could do anything in their power to confirm that we are operating within those parameters, and that's why the EME studies are typically provided. As it relates to a gap in coverage, I, that's a term of art that means if I have an existing system that's up and operating, and I have an area that is operating at a deficient level, that demonstrates a gap in coverage. For this, there's not a gap in coverage because the network is not up and running, this is the backbone system to turn the system on. After the network is up and running, any future applications that would come into the city would need to demonstrate, if they're asking for a new site, that it's to fill or address a gap in coverage. That is not the circumstance here. I can't establish something that I can't measure because there's no operation in the system. As it relates to how our design was prepared, we reviewed the code, we discussed how we were approaching the application, the design of the project, and going through the system with staff, and I feel that we've done everything to demonstrate our compliance with the code in its totality. Again, we will be as conscientious in operating the site once it goes on air, we will comply with the conditions of approval that we've accepted as they've been presented. With that, I'll end my presentational answer, any questions you might have, if not, I'll return to my seat.
Thank you very much. We'll get to our questions, I'm guessing my fellow commissioners will have them. All right. Does the appellant or their representative wish to make any further comments? You will have a maximum time of 10 minutes.
So I wanted to make note that the city's ordinances have not been updated in nearly 10 years. This was before 5G rollout was established, and there should be upgrades to that. You guys should really take the time to look through that and share that with the city as well. As he had mentioned, that the 800 building is exempt because it's not R1 residential property itself, when a portion of it is R1 residential property and it shares property lines with R1 residential on every side, both sides of the block. And we still haven't received any comments on seeking other locations for these antennas to be placed. Was there any other locations that were sought out? Also, there's been no mention of the apartments that share property lines with the 800 South Main Street building. They share property lines, and it is three-story apartment building, so as the applicant had mentioned, it's not gonna affect anyone because everyone's below that height limitation. Their bedrooms are at the same height as the top of that building, they're gonna be radiated in their own homes. Who's liable for all of this? If three-year-olds get leukemia, if the residents in the apartments, the residents that share property lines with this building, if anyone gets hurt or injured, who's gonna be liable? Is Burbank City liable? Is the planning department liable? Who's liable? Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Does the Commission have any, have any questions for staff, the applicant, or the appellant?
I just wanted to ask one question first, there were a bunch of comments made that the schools were not properly notified.
Is this for staff?
Staff, yes. Sorry, for staff. I just wanted, no, but no one addressed that one or the other, do we know that they were, do we know that they weren't, do we have any specific evidence on that one or the other?
Yes, so as I mentioned earlier, I apologize, Fatima Benitez, Associate Planner, thank you for your question, Commissioner. As I mentioned earlier, there was only one property that reached out to us to let us know that they did not receive a public notice. From there, we did send out a second public notice, but we did not receive further comments about other properties not receiving the second public notice, it was only one property.
Commissioner, I also wanted to clarify that the notices were properly provided to everyone within 1,000-foot radius.
Okay.
And I believe Fatima actually, actually spoke to representatives at some of the schools.
Okay, so you're confident that they were notified?
Yes, they were.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
I have a question for staff, there's a lot of mention about height of the building in the NB zone, is this building existing legal non-conforming? Because I noticed that there was a discrepancy between them. It's, sorry, thank you guys, but this is a question for staff, I just would like to get clarified.
Yes, that is correct, the existing building, looking at 800 South Main Street, is existing legal non-conforming.
And I guess my follow-up question to that is, why are we allowing a non-conformity to be expanded upon?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner, I'll attempt to answer it. So the building itself is legal non-conforming in regards to height, the wireless facility has a different set of standards, the wireless, the development standards for wireless facilities allow wireless facilities to be 15 feet above the building roof, which in this case, it's actually below that height. It's a, it's an additional height in addition to the maximum height for the building itself. In this case, it happens to be legal non-conforming in regards to height, but that doesn't preclude it from meeting the development standards for wireless facilities.
Commissioner, if I may add, the building height itself is legal non-conforming, the building height is not being changed as part of this application, the wireless facility being placed on top of the building is what we are considering, and that is subject to its own set of independent development standards and considerations.
Thank you.
Are there any, does anyone have any other questions for staff? Are there any questions for the applicant? Any questions?
This time, no.
Any questions for the appellant?
No.
No, okay. I, I have a couple questions, I'll start with staff first. As far as, and I, I apologize if this was said, there's, there was a lot of numbers being thrown around. I understand the building's legal non-conforming, what is the current height, what is the current height allowance in the code?
Are you asking for the neighborhood business zone?
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll look that up in just a second.
All right. And while, while that's being looked up, I also have another quick question in terms of the existing screening closure that's for HVAC units, it's 8.5 feet, is that correct?
Can you clarify what you're asking for?
In terms of the, there's an existing screening closure, correct? What is the current height of that enclosure?
So I, I, we'll have to double check what that existing height is. They are required to be screened to make sure they're concealed from view, so the height can vary from building to building depending on the height of the actual equipment.
Got it. And I have, I have a question for the applicant, please, Mr. Searcy.
Hi, good evening. In terms of the, the map on Exhibit C 57 that shows your proposed sites, I, I understand that this is the scope of this project. In terms of the other, the other sites, is this your first, is this your first project to have a hearing on it, in terms of your other planned sites?
The first project that I'm aware of, it's the first project I've dealt with that's had to have a, a hearing. The other projects we've had are co-locations on rooftops, and so co-locations on rooftops are a 6409, it's a FCC process that we go through with staff. Staff reviews it as a part of the building and safety review, and so it's, it's a little bit of a different animal as far as the process.
Okay, and this is, this is just in Burbank or your?
In Burbank, specifically in Burbank, yes ma'am.
In Burbank or any of your other cities, have you had any noticing requirements in terms of your other projects?
Every city that has an administrative or a public hearing process or discretionary process has a notification requirement.
Okay, how many times have you gone through that before, noticing?
Just with DISH or throughout my whole career?
Just with DISH, we don't need to, how many times has DISH noticed?
I would say on the projects I've had, probably no less than 20, 25 times.
Okay.
Over the last couple of years.
And have you had any noticing requirements with your other projects?
Yes, they've all had noticing.
I mean, I'm sorry, have you had any noticing issues with your other projects?
No, this is the first one I've ever had, or an issue with our vendor.
Okay. Thank you, I, that's it for now.
Okay. Could I just also bring up that if there's a consideration for a continuance, that we would like to discuss the 64, or the shot clock timelines as well, as a part of that consideration?
Noted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other questions?
No, nothing else.
Okay. I'm still waiting for my.
We have, we have an answer for, for you, actually regarding the maximum building height in the NB zone. So the maximum height is 25 feet to the ceiling of the highest room for human occupancy, which is a building code term really, so it's, it's really an internal height from, from average grade to the, to the ceiling of the, of the structure. So that is, 25 feet is the maximum height.
Commissioner, I also like to note that the property development standards for the NB zone do allow heights to exceed 25 feet with a CUP, and it also specifically identifies that the max height up to an additional 15 feet can be approved without the need of a CUP if the 45-degree angle, which is a tool that planners use, can be maintained.
Got it. Thank you.
Then answering your second part of the question regarding the existing height of the visual screen for the HVAC equipment, in reviewing the plans, the existing screen is roughly six to seven feet in height. With that said, the screen will be required to, to increase in height to ensure that all of the wireless accessory equipment is completely screened from the public view.
Got it. And I'm sorry to keep on making you look up stuff, I sincerely apologize. As far as the As far as the height requirements in R1H, what is the maximum height requirement for an R1H zone? I know that it's budding, I'm well aware that it's.
Commissioner, so, R1H zones has the same height requirements as the R1 Zone? And that's for, it's 30 feet to the top roof and 20 feet at the top of building plate.
Got it. Thank you.
If I may add, I just want to clarify that a small portion of the site is developed with surface parking and is not being impacted by the project. And that is a site that is specifically zoned R1.
Got it. Thank you very much. Any further questions for staff, the applicant, or the appellant?
No.
No? All right. I now declare the public hearing closed, and the commission will now deliberate. What's the commission's pleasure?
To discuss, further discuss the project and the project description, and I think it's a difficult position to be in. This is one, you know, that I was thinking about this weekend, going through all this material. I'm a practicing planner myself, and we see these kind of projects all the time. And, you know, we have these reports and the calculation and the methodology, and I would say it's very difficult, you know. There's a reason I didn't study math or engineering. It's difficult to understand what all of it means. But it's also difficult when you don't have the evidence to, the evidence otherwise as to why it shouldn't happen. And we live in a, you know, ever-connected world where, you know, more and more people need access to the internet and technology that runs, it's the infrastructure that runs our world. And from a planning commission perspective, we're here to deliberate the procedures that city staff has followed with the evidence that was provided to them, and for them to make the findings as granted by the general plan and the zoning code, and for us to, as a planning commission, to find whether they've met the standards for the current code, not any future code. So, with that, I think, yeah, this is just my thoughts on this project and the position that we're in as a planning commission, not at a city council level, to be able to make policy decisions, but more so to, we're here to uphold the code. That's all I wanted to say.
Mr. Bennett?
I guess my two main thoughts were, one, I was somewhat disappointed that many of the points raised tonight were not raised in the appeal itself. I think that we could have had a more constructive discussion if that had been the case. You know, clearly, some of the points in the appeal were, well, they didn't seem to have grounds in law. So, I would have rather that, you know, references to law and code have been in that appeal itself. My second concern is that if we were to grant this appeal, I don't know how we would actually build any wireless infrastructure in most of the city, given that we have commercial and residential budding everywhere. I think it would be extremely hard to build out any sort of wireless infrastructure in the city, and I don't think that would be a good idea.
Thank you. My thoughts, I concur with my colleagues in the sense that this is not an easy, this is not an easy position to be in as a commission. We all live in the city, we all love the city, which is why we're sitting up here. We all have, we all have families. And this, and I've said it before and I've said it again, this commission very much is a land use commission, not a policy commission. It's probably one of my most common things I've said up here on the dais. And, you know, I don't know, I'm not going to speak for the rest of my commissioners, but there is no one on this dais who wishes, we could make, we wish we could make policy. We truly do. Unfortunately, that is from a city council level, a lawmaker level, where we're a land use advisory board, essentially. And, you know, while I wish personally that we could deny this project based on a height requirement, it, the law is so specific, it is very, very specific with wireless. And that's, and that's really, that's really the law, and what we have to follow as a commission. In terms of the argument as far as CEQA goes, I have a background in urban planning myself, so I completely understand that argument. I do not see the findings where this could be a project under CEQA right now as it is, as we're sitting here. You know, and that's not to say that the applicant won't come back, and then that is something for this commission to decide, but as we're sitting here right now, I personally cannot make a finding that this is a project under CEQA based on the facts. And I agree with my fellow commissioner, Mr. Bennett, that I did have some issues with the appeal in terms of lack of facts. I mean, I, we all have emotions for this project, and I completely understand that. And I also completely understand that, you know, we all wish we can wave a magic wand and make it go away. You know, that's a really tough situation to be in. But in terms of actual facts, there were also a couple of things that I found, not, I wouldn't use the term disturbing, but where there were actual bills that were not, had not been passed yet, where there was an FCC that staff couldn't find, and I couldn't find the FCC number, just Googling it as well. And so, I feel like when an applicant, their appeal comes before us, we really have to look at the facts. And to me, I don't foresee enough findings to deny the project. That's where I'm sitting. Any?
Very good, I will make the motion then.
Okay.
I will move that we adopt staff's recommendation, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Burbank, denying the appeal of the community development director's approval of project number 23-0005025, and approving the administrative use permit to allow a new unmanned roof-mounted wireless telecommunication facility on an existing commercial office building located at 800 South Main Street, based on the findings of fact and subject to the attached conditions of approval.
We have a motion?
I second the motion.
All right, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? I'll just say that, oh.
I apologize.
Sure.
Vice Chair, I just wanted to reiterate that one of the conditions was read into the record as modified.
Oh, yes.
So, yes.
So, just to clarify for the record, so the motion would include the modified language in the condition?
Absolutely.
And the second would, in essence, affirm that motion with the modified condition?
This is for the typo?
Yes, in condition one.
Great.
Sorry. Thank you, Chair, for.
Thank you.
Allowing for the clarification.
Of course, thank you. Thank you for always keeping us on our toes. I'll just say, oh, do we have any further deliberation?
No, do we have a second? Oh, you second, thank you.
And we have a second, okay. I'll just say that I understand that your attorney could not be here tonight, and, you know, I know that there is another avenue towards this to the city council. So, I'm aware that there's another step for this process. So, I just wanted to thank everybody for being here. This was not a difficult, or this was a difficult hearing to sit through. And I also just wanted to thank the members of the public for being here and being very respectful towards this process, because this is not an easy issue, so. With that being said, may we take roll?
Vice Chair Wick?
Yes.
Commissioner Marketumian?
Aye.
And Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Motion passive.
All right. I think we're going to wait just a minute to get Chair Razati from the hallway.
Okay, thank you. We are on reports, the commission now is the time for reports from staff. Are there any reports?
Chair, there are no reports.
Okay. Oral communications, now is the time for oral communications from the public. Any person speaking during this period may address the commission on any matter concerning city business. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to the planning staff. For members who wish to comment by telephone, please call 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in the queue until all in-person comments have been received. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as we get the first few callers through. For callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or your computer, and turn off the speaker when you deliver your comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers? Ms. Gable, come on up.
I didn't know you had to submit a card for oral comments.
It's okay. We know who you are.
Well, you know, the decision is the decision. And I think we'll see what the community does next steps. I was a little surprised on this, some of the comments made. I was pleased to hear a planner raise a question about nonconforming becoming more nonconforming. That was a good question to raise. So, what the commission could do is agendize an item to discuss, presenting to the council a proposal to develop new rules about the location of wireless telecommunications facilities, especially with respect to time, place, and manner. As you know, the council voted to set up some buffer zones around schools and other locations for the purpose of opening grand stores. And other cities frankly have become more aggressive in putting into their code desirable locations for wireless telecommunications facilities. So, I would suggest the commission make that an agenda, discuss it. If you invite the community, they'll come back and present you with additional information. But I think it would be a very constructive way of updating a 10-year-old ordinance. I was on the council when it was adopted. And I don't think we ever imagined that if a property was in a split zone, the decision would be not to take the most conservative, careful approach possible, which is why I think many of us felt that this should have been a conditional use permit, not an AUP, based on the sum total of the factors affecting the location. Are there other spots? Heck, Glenwood's just 200 feet to the west. There are tons of locations along there that would never interfere with the kind of adjacencies that you saw people bring to your attention tonight. So, I think the council can look into time, place, and manner. I'm sure the staff and the city attorney can provide a good discussion about approaching the possibility when the commission agendizes it, to discuss buffer zones around schools and childcare facilities and other more sensitive land uses, and at the same time, find that there's adequate room in the city to locate these kinds of facilities and close the gaps. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? And just for the record, if you can just come up and state your name.
My name is Marvelli Hornblatt. I was a member of the Rancho Master Plan Committee. The Master Plan Committee was assembled when the community was caught flat-footed when the drive-in went out and pavilions went in as a plan development. Conditions of approval, my favorite term, were attached to that development. The problem with conditions of approval is nobody knows about them. There's a driveway between Starbucks and El Pollo Loco. Conditions of approval require that to have a right-turn-only sign out of that, exiting that driveway. It got knocked down once, it got put up again, it got knocked down a second time, nobody replaced it. So, conditions of approval are only significant in who is aware of them. I understand that the codes were established at some point for these wireless installations. I've been fighting the good fight for a long time. Codes are made to be revisited and revised, and this calls for it. This is important, and I will fight for the Rancho, I'll fight for the Rancho Master Plan. I'm a horse owner of too many years, and I would encourage this commission to consider all these points. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Going once? Twice?
I wanted to mention that we did pay the appeal fee, and we were only given 10 business days to get everyone together. It's the middle of summer, people are on vacation, people already have different things happening. Our attorney was very busy. He had things in Notion from a long time ago, and that we weren't able to extend this, we should be able to have another hearing with our attorney present.
Okay, I'll take that under advisement, and we'll discuss it.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I declare the public comment period closed. I would think that this would be appealed to the city council at that level, correct?
Well, I'll chime in, but then the city attorney can correct if I'm wrong. There's always an appeal process after the decision of the commission. Whether the appellant decides to proceed down that road and undertake that effort, it's part of exhausting any administrative remedies, and the appeal process is one of, is the way that that process could be undertaken.
And what is that appeal fee?
I don't have the fee schedule in front of me, but I know the, I know the appeal fees, there's two different sets of appeal fees, one for residential and then for non-residential, so we have to go back and look at that.
And do we have the power to waive that fee?
No, the only entity that can modify fees is the city council.
City council, okay. So, my thinking would be, rather than coming back here and appealing it, you should go straight to council where they can make.
Chair, sorry to correct, that the appeal would have to be of the decision of the commission tonight to the council.
Yes.
So, it wouldn't be coming back here to appeal, it'd be just appealing the decision.
Yeah, to council.
Correct.
And we don't have the power to waive the fee, but you can ask council when you're there to waive the fee. Okay? Okay? Go ahead.
Chair, just, if I may, just because this is one of those things where we just want to be really clear, to have a valid appeal, you have to submit the full application with the fees. So.
I understand.
No, just, just so that the public's aware of it. It's not that, I know you understand, I just.
And I just wanted, I just wanted to highlight the process. So even the resolution that was adopted tonight, there is a provision in it which cites a specific Burbank municipal code section, which spells out the process. So just to reiterate what our director said here, planning manager, there is an appeal period. The, the last step administratively is to file an appeal that would go to council. But again, those provisions, which are important just because you don't want to be time barred, are in the municipal code. And it's even, it's even spelled out in, in the resolution that was adopted tonight. So if you just reference those provisions, you'll know exactly what needs to be done. The fee schedule is, is, is listed on the Burbank municipal, or sorry, the Burbank city website.
Right. So.
Can you provide us with that?
So staff will walk you, walk you through the process. So we'll, either tonight or tomorrow, they'll walk you through the process as to how you can make the appeal and all the necessary paperwork.
And Chair, I'll just clarify, you can contact the project planner, Fatima Benitez, and she'll be able to hand, deliver the information to you as far as the resolution and the other things that were in question as far as fees and time.
Okay. Okay. Now is the time for approval of the minutes from the May 13th, 2024 meeting. Board members, have you had a chance to review those? And do you have any comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion?
I will second that.
We have a second. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, seeing none, I said aye, sorry. Opposed, and no one's abstaining. Now is the time for introduction of additional agenda items. Planning board members may introduce items to be placed on a future agenda. I think Ms. Gableddy had a, a good comment. We should, we should discuss this wireless project, the ordinance that we have in place, the laws that we have in place, and the sensitivity of, of the locations and have a discussion to make a recommendation to council.
Duly noted.
Thank you. Anybody else? No. Now is the time for city planner comments. Are there any comments from our city planner?
I just wanted to give a little bit of an update because I know they, there was a reference to the Burbank Rancho neighborhood specific plan. I know that was an effort brought forth by the public, funded by council, and we're in the stages where we've actually had submittals from consultant teams. And we're in the process of finalizing that effort and presenting it to the, to the council. Hopefully they can approve the funding for the project at that point in time. And then that begins the process of engaging the public and going through the effort, which would include the Rancho Review Board through that, as well as other stakeholders within the neighborhood and the community that have an interest in updating the regulations to preserve as much local control within the neighborhood and address the issues that have come to light in light of SB 35 and other state mandated efforts. So just wanted to let you know, because this is something eventually will come to you, but I also wanted just to inform the public that we're well aware of all the hard work that's been done in the past. And we anticipate that the same members of the public, as well as others, will be engaged in the effort as we go through the process of developing the Burbank Rancho Neighborhood Specific Plan.
Thank you. We will now adjourn the planning board meeting on Monday, August 13th, August 12th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. The meeting will be held in person in the city chambers at 275 East Olive Avenue. The public is invited to attend the meeting in person or view the meeting online or television. The public will be able to provide comments in the following ways, in person or by the webpage, www.burbankca.gov/ecomments, or by calling 238-3335 in the 818 area code. Thank you all for participating tonight. Good evening.